Madam Clerk, do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray?
Present.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss? Councilmember Medavetzky?
Present.
Councilmember Rathwell?
Present.
Council President Dundon?
Present.
Thank you.
So for anybody who's following at home, we're going to jump out of order a little bit and then we're going to start with RL twenty-five dash one fifty-six. And our first presenter is Councilmember Robert Kavanaugh, and it's in the special rules and proceed.
Sorry, second to last.
Oh. Well, look at that. I screwed that all up. So we're going to start with RL twenty-five dash one sixty-four with Councilmember Madavetzky as our presenter, and this is in Municipal and Public Affairs, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is RL twenty-five dash one sixty-four in ordinance to amend the Charter, Chapter one seventy-eight for extreme weather conditions for canine companions. And this, uh, Hadassa, I mean, Councilmember Hadassa Medavetzky is our presenter, so if you'd like to talk about it.
Yeah, great. So there were a couple of, uh, local residents that noticed some issues with animals. I have a letter from one of them. After they were concerned about these issues, they reached out to the Humane Society, to County Legislature, to our state reps. And I got pulled in on a meeting at the Humane Society last week, and they, the group presented, um, me with what Syracuse has passed, which is should be attached in the packet. I'll just read the letter from Mary Ann Dorner, uh, who kind of kicked off the discussion. So she said, Dear Councilwoman Madavetzky and Binghamton City Council, this letter is succinct and to the point about the treatment of animals. I am requesting that Binghamton City Council reexamine laws regarding animals who are tethered twenty-four hours a day or more, um, or sorry, for even more than six consecutive hours a day without a walk or any type of stimulation, which is inhumane, unethical and cruel. In researching this type of animal cruelty, I discovered that all types of discomfort, pain and disease occur ranging from atrophying of muscles and joints to arthritis, uh, since the animal does not have the opportunity to run freely as it was created to do. In addition, an animal who does not ever have a human, uh, any human contact or stimulation, except for the once a day feeding experiences a range of conditions from loneliness, boredom, anxiety, depression, and fear to the most destructive behavior of self-mutilation. Further cruelty results when the animal is left outside in either frigid temperatures causing frostbite or death, or extreme heat causing dehydration and death, since water freezes or evaporates at those temperatures. I became aware of a situation living on the south side of Binghamton, October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, and phoned every possible authority for assistance. A meeting occurred on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to move forward on not allowing animals to have to suffer this kind of cruelty for another winter. And I'm respecting respectfully asking you to look deep into your hearts and to help the voiceless. So, um, so that's the kind of the letter and a bit of a summary of where things are at. I have started doing some work on it, although I would like this to more be a committee conversation and get community impact on the specifics of the legislation. Um, I did speak with, um, uh, staff from Lepardo's office today, and the Lepardo's legislative director is researching how this law interacts with the state law. Um, that was, um, one of the items that was assigned at the, the meeting last week. And that's, so there are, there are kind of things happening in the background. October fourteenth is when our dog warden returns, so I also would like her input. She was invited to the meeting but was out of the office at the time of the meeting. So I definitely want her input, um, before anything is, uh, potentially moved forward. So just bringing it to this body to start thinking about how or if, uh, we would like to do something like this.
Um, yeah, I think it's a good idea. We just have to figure out how we would enforce it. And to be fair to everyone, when we enforce it, along with the dog warden. So we, we, we just have to make sure it doesn't burden her much. But yeah, it's, it's a great idea and something, something to think about.
In the, in what Syracuse has, they do have graduated sanctions. So the, um, initial fee is in their version, again, we can change things always.
Yeah.
Um, is a hundred and fifty dollars for the first offense, two hundred and fifty dollars for the second offense, and five hundred dollars for each additional offense. Um, it does focus on the, the tethering aspect in extreme heat. And, and the specific issues that were being discussed at the Humane Society meeting, uh, involved people who live in a house having dogs tied up, um, outside of their house, uh, for long periods of time in extreme weather. So otherwise, I'd, I'd be interested in just sending to committee and as the council at time and bandwidth to, to look at it, and I'll keep behind the scenes, following up with people like our dog warden and our state assemblywoman. And, um, folks who are hearing about this and want to weigh in with ideas, how best to, to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Nobody has anything else they want to mention on that at this time?
No, we're going to send it to committee though.
Okay. Our next presenter is our chief engineer, Ron Lake, and this is in the Committee of Public Works and Parks, and I'll hand it over to the chairman, Nate Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Council President. This is RL twenty-five dash one fifty-seven, a resolution for supplemental agreement number six for Deco Streetscape improvements. Uh, what's going on with this project, Ron?
This, this is for the Deco project, and it's another amendment or supplement to BNL's contract for various items of work. It's very well detailed, but I'll give you some of the major things, uh. We had to do a, a new driveway for, I think it's the Taco Bar. Since after everything was designed, they decided that they needed to have their dumpster in a different location, and they needed an entrance into it. And if you look at some of the details, you can see how many sheets just that one movement created, designed things to happen on. And then another of the larger ones was Henry Street intersection, uh, with, with Water Street. And that was to change the lights to make, to get rid of that old cable swinging type thing and make it look like the rest of the red lights that we have downtown. So, and there was, uh, a renewal of their software that they use to keep track of this project, which is what we started with on the first phase. And it's what we normally use for the DOT projects. And then we did have some, on Washington Street, we had some kind of major minor problems with the lights and the electrical through there, and we found it was in pretty bad shape. And we needed to replace a lot of it and put in some new, some new pull boxes and, and some controllers. So that's the majority of it.
So the, the costs outlined here, this is, this goes, is it just design services or is it also going to be covering the construction?
It's the design services plus what little bit extra that is for the construction.
Shoot, are we going to expect another supplemental agreement for the construction services aspect of it?
No, that's here.
Okay.
Ron, why is the city on the hook for carving out an additional driveway access for project area stakeholders when that's considered private property?
Because it, they hadn't asked for it in the original plans. So now it meant that we had to move some planters, redesign where they were going to go. We had to design a driveway to go in there, and it caused the, I mean, if you look at that one, that one sheet, there's probably close to fifteen different drawings that it affected, and they had to reissue them to the contractor.
Yeah, because I also see where the city requested design modifications to the traffic signal and stuff. And like you said, the difference wiring, the one parking space on the west side of Washington Street. So yeah, I can see where that, that's all in the different drawings.
So this is twenty thousand in additional expenses, and another little cushion of like nine thousand and something, correct? Right? Where it's not two hundred thousand dollars worth of new spending, right?
No.
What were the other project area stakeholders consulted in follow-up coordination? Who were the other project area stakeholders consulted in that follow-up coordination? So we had one owner directed change for Garage Taco. Were all of the other impacted area stakeholders also consulted for follow-up?
Most of them were all consulted at least several times during the design. This was just a totally new thing where they, they went to, uh, to Sarah to find out what they could do about this, and it was decided that in order to make their area work, that we needed to do this.
So the outreach was on the owner's part, so Garage Taco owner too, Sarah?
We'll get the good explanation.
Uh, this is part of our regular outreach leading up to, um, finalizing the designs. This property changed hands shortly bef, or during the design process. So everyone was contacted right along from early design all the way through construction coordination. This change only came in during that because we were notified that there was an ownership change. So that's why the change came in late. But yes, everyone was contacted multiple times. I do regular outreach to all of those folks on both prior coordination as well as ongoing coordination about how this is impacting all of the businesses. I speak with the shop and Old Barn Market are my primary two that are contacting me right now, but I send regular updates to everybody.
Sarah, how often does that happen? So I'll use like the Clinton Street revitalization. So if you're in the process and have a plan to start construction and any one of those properties change ownership, they have buy-in to change all the construction plans?
Not necessarily. They have to make a good case for it. So in this case, um, it's not just benefiting the Garage Taco Bar. They're going to use that as shared garbage coordination for a number of businesses in that area. So it solves a larger problem we have with trash in downtown and being able to get things in and out of there more easily. Um, so it, it's a benefit for a lot of different folks. It just happens to be on this particular property, um, helps us solve a long-term problem. We have done this in the past. We've also said no to those changes in the past when they didn't make sense or they were cost prohibitive for the city.
Until you just said that it was going to be for garbage collection of multiple businesses. Yeah, to me, it didn't make sense to change the plans just for one business and one property owner.
Thank you.
The, um, the traffic signal on Water and Henry, is that? I know that, as far as I know, the newest one that we have downtown is, um, on Holly and Washington. And I, and I really like that traffic signal because I think it's like adaptive. Like it knows that you're there and then it changes if there's nobody else there. Is it kind of on the same like caliber as that one? Because
It's, it's going to be the, like the ones downtown that, that have the pole and the, and the long arms.
Uh huh.
Rather than the wires strung from across the intersection.
Correct.
So it'll match the ones that we're installing and have been installing.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything for Ron? All right. Thank you so much, Ron.
Thank you.
So next is RL twenty-five dash one fifty-eight. The presenter is not John Ryan, so I'm not sure who the officer is that's coming down to present. And this is in the Finance Committee with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Come on down, Sergeant, and
I never met, sorry, I didn't have any, I didn't even know you were a sergeant. I just hit it off in the morning. That's fine. I've been, uh, on nights most of my career, so not many people. Just last couple of years, I've been on the traffic, so. Uh, so I'm here in lieu of, uh, Acting Chief Ryan, uh, and we're requesting that extra funds to be transferred to different lines, uh, to have our police vehicle, vehicles that have been involved in the accidents or failed, uh, engines or transmissions, uh, replaced or repaired.
Uh, we did get, uh, memorandum from, uh, Acting Chief Ryan, uh, at this point, I don't know, two hours ago, three hours ago? Four thirty?
Yeah.
All right. So I, 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 some of us were here a little early and had an opportunity to review it. Um, it was a good amount of information compared to what we normally get, so that was encouraging. Um, but we, I don't think we've all had a chance to go through it. Um, so do you want to, do you want to highlight some of that? Or add your two cents to it, or?
Okay. Yes.
And I actually, I didn't know until I read this memo that you actually kind of do the fleet management for the police department. I, I didn't know that was part of, part of your, your, part of your job is, is traffic division.
Yeah, traffic always, we, we take care of that and, uh, uh, so as outlined in the August twentieth in the, in the department, uh, we have repairs to a vehicle P twenty-six, uh, that were nine thousand four hundred thirteen dollars. That was one of the vehicles that was involved in the accident, um, our fault. Obviously, we have to, uh, pay for that repairs.
That is the August twenty-fourth incident on Clinton Street?
Uh, no, that, that vehicle is another vehicle, but that is P twenty-six was the if there's a
So this request doesn't?
P, P twenty-six was back in June seventeenth accident. So this vehicle has been already repaired. Uh, I believe it was just recently paid with the first eleven thousand.
Right, there, there were some vehicles on there that we did an eleven thousand and some change. If you know, previously we did that.
From June thirtieth, we had that request, correct?
Mm-hmm, and then this is an additional request for
thirty-six, seven forty-seven.
We're about five more vehicles, it looks like.
So in the June thirtieth conversation for the vehicle repairs, it was noted that there's been an inordinate amount of collisions that are the department's fault. So, so we had that grouping. Chuck, you just mentioned five additional. We've got today's request.
I was just looking at.
We have three, three more accidents since that, since then. But then we do have, uh, one, two, three, four, five vehicles that had the transmission or engine failures. That was not
So non-collision, non-department fault. Could we at some point? I shouldn't say at some point, Chuck, when you're, as soon as you're able to tally the total cost for vehicle repairs in the last year, I appreciate the reference to an inordinate amount of collisions that are, are the department's fault, but I think for my brain, it would be helpful to know what that cost has been. Um, and I believe that the memo we received outlined some of the
Uh, I think it outlined like after June collisions, but there's definitely some prior collision in the year or two.
Are you able to speak at all to, I mean, in particular, I would say I'm interested in the August twenty-fourth incident, uh, involving a parked car on Clinton Street. But are you able to speak to the kind of way that personnel are addressed in collisions such as these? And whether reports are submitted or investigations conducted?
I am, that is still, uh, under internal investigation. I can't really comment on that as much as, uh, Acting Chief Ryan outlined in the email.
Do you have an idea of the timeline in which we could expect a resolution or those investigations to be completed?
That all has to be requested through him. I can
Requested through Acting?
Yeah.
Chief Ryan, okay.
Um, one of the, uh, I don't have the printed out email in front of me, but one of the, uh, requests was for, I think, a four thousand dollar new engine on a twenty-twelve or thirteen SUV.
Yes.
It was that
P fifty-four. Yep. That is a
Is that good money to spend at the, I mean, apparently you think so.
That is a uh, traffic division vehicle. That is a second vehicle that sat, has a lettering traffic division on it. I don't know if you've seen my truck, it has that traffic. So that it would be Kevin's, my, uh, part, um, another officer that works in traffic division, that would be his vehicle, and that is always used for everything that we have. Whenever we have parades or anything, we use both of the vehicles, one up front, one in the back. So, or he uses that vehicle throughout the day, uh, to do all the impounds. So that vehicle is heavily used. Uh, it is twenty thirteen. It's not part of the patrol vehicles, so it is very, it's not rundown vehicle. So it might have been twenty thirteen, but it's still the body and everything has a lot more left in it. And if we do end up changing an engine in it, we could have a lot more life out of it. I think it's very sound, uh, to spend four grand on the engine instead of another fifty thousand dollars for a same vehicle. And it's already outfitted with the lights and computer and everything that we need in it.
Is anything else wrong with the vehicle besides that?
No.
Okay.
Yes. Maybe a little out of the realm here, but since you mentioned outfitting vehicles, there's a computer in every vehicle now, correct?
Correct.
And, but what, what things are still getting handwritten? Like, uh, there's still handwritten reports being generated, yes?
Uh, only if the computers are down. Uh, right now, if everything is working, the only thing that it's being written is the, when they take statements, depositions from individuals, that's about the only thing that's, uh, and front page of a domestic report because it's that carbon copy. Those are the only thing that I'm aware of that they handwrite. Everything else is computer generated.
So I guess my, my only take on this is that last year, this, this, we didn't have a, didn't seem like there wasn't a lot of incidents with the vehicle crashes. And this year seems like it was particularly bad. Is there any insights of what's driving this to happen, like?
Uh, yeah, this year is one-off. Since I've been here, I never seen so many accidents that we have. It's unfortunate. Uh, not really, can't really pinpoint what's happening. Uh, I know I have been in contact with the other departments, those like state troopers, and they all seem to be in this phase. So I'm not sure if it's, uh, newer drivers.
That was my, I thought, well, we, we just brought on a whole young class of officers, and that might be it, but I don't, and then I didn't, I'm not sure if that was it or not.
Yeah, a couple of these were definitely caused by the one or two-year officers, uh, but not all of them, so it's really not.
Um, since counsel, uh, just got the memo again a couple of hours ago, I know that Nada Walsh has read it, and we will probably have some follow-up questions. I'm not going to motion to have this expedited. Um, we'll put it on, so it'll give us till next meeting to address any issues.
So I, I just want to clarify, so if you go through the memo, the itemized needs justified for the thirty-six thousand seven hundred forty-seven has nothing to do with any accident in the vehicle. It's either repairs and parts, dealer repairs, in-house airbags, two for tran, or three for transmission and one for an engine. So P twenty-three and P seventy-five are not part of the thirty-six thousand that they're requesting at this time, according to the memo.
Correct.
I do appreciate the opportunity or like the advocacy for the opportunity for all of us to give that memo or review. Again, I mean, I read the first couple of lines, but I haven't seen the rest of it.
Although I do, I do want to point out that we do have several vehicles are laid up, and that does take a toll on the remaining vehicles that we have currently. Uh, yeah, well, all of them are out of service, so just up waiting, pending the money, money transfer, so we can start fixing it. But sooner the, we can put them in the rotation, it's better, but you guys know what you mean too.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify again, the, the transfer we approved or that was introduced June thirtieth for vehicle repair, there are still vehicles that were identified in that need that have not been repaired? Okay.
No, that was, the June, uh, June vehicle has been repaired. Uh, and that money was transferred.
Right, that, that money, they, they've had money in the line, but in order to maintain their repair line for the next three months, we just need this money also. It's not like this is going to get us up to zero and then, then that's it. Um, they need that money, then they still have some leftover to do the repairs for, from now till the end of the year. Yeah, so Councilmember Rathwell, the eleven thousand that we moved back then, that was for P twenty-six, which was in a collision as an SUV, and then P fifty-three, which was mechanical failures for a transmission. And that's actually the two that are highlighted right there.
And P fifty, P fifty-three is the prisoner transport van, so we need it that fixed as soon as possible because we
I mean, literally all the repairs are basically in-house repairs of engine or transmission. I do want to follow up with the accidents like Councilmember Rathwell said. But because this is a separate from the accidents, I don't see why we wouldn't expedite this for the repairs. I mean, it's transmissions and engines, which any vehicle with a lot of wear and tear, like police vehicles get, that does wear out.
And, and you're looking at the memo right in front of you, right? So, and I, I think that's where I would agree with Councilmember Kavanaugh, is I don't have the memo Okay. right in front of me to review in order to make a determination, and it was sent at four thirty. I mean, I appreciate the expedition need, but without more time to review, it feels like a difficult expectation.
Anyone else?
I'm, uh, kind of curious specifically about the, the revenue lines that were increasing to uh, make this amendment. Is it, so what, how did, do we just do better with the public safety permits, zoning fees than what we had originally budgeted for?
Absolutely, yep. Public safety permits have been coming in, uh, the zoning fees and controller fees, just the fee from Broom County. We just got a little bit more yesterday from what we rolled over on taxes.
Okay.
From what we budgeted, because that was a, that's just an, an actual estimate.
That's just an, an actual estimate. Yeah, and other gen- general department income.
So I guess that's good news then, right?
Chuck, what is the actual other general department income?
I believe. I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe it's um. For like foils, um, stuff like that. Like, a lot of foils go into the police department, but. Uh, police fees, but this is for other general foils.
Anybody else have anything? Hearing none, well, thank you two so much. And we'll move on to RL twenty-five dash one fifty-nine, which our comptroller, Truck Robinson, is our presenter. And this is in the Finance Committee with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we're cleaning up a lot of random lines here.
Yes, in the ramps department, um. Uh, due to um. The State Street issue, I wanted to make sure that these lines were cleaned up. We may have some savings in some of the State Street expense lines, um, towards the end of the year. And I can probably use those for other lines, but I, we did a. Deep dive on these, and we know that um, they had requested some more equipment and repairs and maintenance. Their credit card expenses is going up due to um, more and more college students. Are using credit cards to pay for their parking. Uh, it's. Cash and check, so.
And do we, do we have a convenience fee on that?
We do not. No, it goes through let us go.
Are they collecting convenience fee and passing the charge on to us?
I know.
We should ask this question.
I can look in their management fees, but I don't think so.
I mean. We should create a convenience fee then. I mean, and we do it for the water bills, right, and for that?
For, we don't col- we don't collect the convenience fee.
No, but the credit card, the water.
Credit, the credit card company does.
Yeah.
The pass through.
Yeah. All right.
And call your street insurance. That's just, uh, it's part of their salaries. Um, they include their health insurance and uh, insurance for the lot on there as well. Um, if there were any claims on that. That would increase it, but we don't really um, account for claims, we just do the normal budgeting. Uh, I don't know if there were any claims on that lot this year or not, I can check. Um, general operating supplies, just a slight increase in their gasoline and fuel line, a slight increase. Electricity for Colliers up, Seven Holly Street is up, and the Water Street, um, we didn't, with the Water Street being. Recent opened this year, we didn't know what the budget was gonna be for electricity, so. Um, but that's gonna be the, the number at the end of the year.
Anyone else? Hearing none, thank you so much, Chuck.
Okay.
Thank you. Juliet, should I assume you're our next presenter? Sarah, all right, our next presenter is Sarah Gloss, this is in, this is RL twenty-five dash one sixty, it's in the Planning Committee, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmill.
Thank you, President Dundon, this is RL twenty-five one sixty, a resolution to authorize applications. For New York State Homes and Community Renew- or HRC, excuse me, move in New York program?
And I'm kidding, Tito, I will uh, try my best to. Explain this, well, um, so New York State and Homes and Community Renewal, that's NYSHCR. Um, announced the move in program, I don't know if any of you guys saw the press release that came out, I think last week, maybe the week before. It is a program um, for manufactured home placement on vacant properties in municipalities across New York State. Uh, so this is the authorizing resolution that would enable not. In the city of Binghamton to submit for funding to build these homes in Binghamton. This in and of itself is not an application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal, it's simply authorizing legislation. Um, New York State wanted us to confirm basically that these were legal in our community and that they were something that we could actually. Have here, um, because there's certain requirements in order to have them in place based on the very unique nature of manufactured homes. Um, so there is, like I said, the press release that came out from New York State, it has really good pictures of the pilot properties in Syracuse. Um, we had a meeting with the Syracuse Land Bank, who was part of the pilot program to talk through some of the pros and cons. Um, this actually came to us from the Broom County Land Bank, because they've been closely tied in with this pilot program, working with Homes and Community Renewal. Um, so they were the ones that brought it to our attention prior to the press release coming out. Um, so really just an authorizing resolution, there's a lot of technical details that I can answer questions on or try to uh, communicate, but I think. They're kind of best shown in the um, the request for applications, uh, we did confirm, you, you'll see that there's a. Draft model piece of legislation at the end of your packet, um, we did confirm with Homes and Community Renewal that we can modify that. Um, the draft includes specific mention to a particular applicant that is required. Um, that is just something that when they wrote the RFA, the request for applications that they put together, but upon further review. They don't need it to actually reference the applicant itself, um, we just need to authorize or. Otherwise demonstrate that our municipality can allow these to exist within our borders.
So I saw the requirement as far as the. Municipalities affirming via local resolution that they can permit to the manufactured home code, saw the evidence of cycle. Site control requirement. If I read the program guidelines correctly, however, the requirement is for formal municipal support. For the applications, not. Authorization from this body to apply, so.
Yes, and I have, we, a communication from um. Crystal Loffler, the president of the Office of Community Renewal in HCR. Question in regard to the required municipal resolution, does the resolution have to be specific to the applicant, or can it be a general resolution related to any entity proposing? Proposing to place cross mods within the municipality, Crystal's response. Ideally, the resolution will name the applicant, but the real intent of the resolution is to have the municipal body formally advance vote on. A statement of support for the specific program and commit to limiting obstacles to permitting and approvals for citing cross mods.
Sure, so that makes sense, I think in terms of the applications and the entities represented and the projects specifically represented in. Any application that we are going to authorize or support. I would very much prefer to have the opportunity to review the applications or receive details regarding the sites, the model. Base models, the household income targets before some. And if we're looking again, if I, I, I mean, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but the program guidelines identify. Application portal opens November fifteenth, it's open until January thirtieth, the scoring is competitive rather than first come, first served. I mean, so in reference to the expedition request, I, I, I don't understand why. The expedition is required.
Yes, so how the city would be involved in this would be by facilitating the transfer of vacant properties that the city owns to an applicant, those. Come back in front of this, this body, so that would be the opportunity to ask specific questions of the applicant. However, it has been extremely strongly communicated from HCR that they want this to move quickly, they want, they want there to be as few barriers as possible. Want these cited. As soon as possible, so by putting this resolution forward, we can then say, we are a community that allows these, that authorizes these. And then we can have nonprofit applicants come back with proposals that will be brought to this body. That will enable us to meet those deadlines, because obviously, even if we got um. Something today, it's not back in front of this body for two weeks, ideally, I think you'd want to take another two weeks to review at the very least. Now we're into November, we're into that application period, um, they are expecting these funds to go quickly, as you noted, they're not first come, first served, but. Um, it has been communicated strongly that they want the applications in the pipeline very quickly. That being said, that's why we want to bring this very quickly to allow for those other parts of the process where there is more substantive conversation to take longer. So this just kind of gets us started, and then there's additional um, communications and specific pieces of resolution that come before this body for a vote.
You have, go ahead, go ahead.
So Sarah, flipping through this application as everybody's talking, because I normally do my best thinking here on the floor. This says that the city had to apply by four PM on September twenty-second. Um, to get the application, and is that when we were in before that, that would be under application and award process, section four.
Let me look at that, because they didn't even announce this until like a week ago, so I don't see how that.
That's when the applications became available, was September twenty-second, they'll begin accepting applications November fifteenth.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
And with that, any applications submitted between that November fifteenth and January thirtieth, twenty twenty-six timeline will need to include. The affirmation that the municipality can permit. I, I'm very much still stuck on not wanting to. Rush an approval without having had the opportunity to consider the applications or the sites. Or the base models or the. Household income target.
I just want to reiterate, this does not allow a nonprofit to just go willy-nilly making applications on city property.
Sure, no, I understand that.
And, and the nonprofits in, and the land bank specifically only owns two properties in the city of Binghamton that are vacant, this program. Requires, I think they'll be flexible on it, but wants a minimum of ten properties, I don't think there's any nonprofit in the city of Binghamton that currently owns ten vacant. Properties that could, these could be built on, they also don't necessarily want them clustered, so we're looking for scatter site properties. Which is where the city's participation really becomes crucial, um, this does not, unlike Block by Block, does not include a subsidy for the purchase of vacant properties. It also does not allow the nonprofit to keep any of the proceeds of the sale, that all has to go back to HCR. So it's a six percent deferred developer fee that goes to the nonprofit, and that's their only upside on this. So there's not really wiggle room for anyone to be working on the private market, to purchase vacant properties, to then go into the pipeline without. The city's approval, and also this is, again, just asserting something that is already true, we already do allow these to exist in the city of Binghamton. We already have all of the processes and planning and zoning set up to allow these to happen, this is simply putting it on the books for people. That says, yes, we have looked at all of our rules and regulations, we've talked to building and code, we've talked to planning. We have talked to our legislative body that wants this to happen, and we are allowing this to move forward. So this does not really allow anyone to submit an application without additional communication and conversation with the city. But it does show that we are taking a proactive approach, asking for these things, we can now advertise this to nonprofits and say. Our doors are open, we're willing to have these conversations, we've already had two separate nonprofits reach out to us interested in participating in the program. So this just helps us have those conversations and not waste any of their time without having an actual authorizing resolution from the body.
But there is no barrier to pursuing and engaging in those conversations.
Which conversation specifically?
The conversations with the nonprofit entity is where otherwise who saw the move in New York. Application announcement and would like to discuss with the city the potential of. Site control and moving forward, there is no barrier currently to those conversations moving forward.
Technically, but if this is not supported by this body, we would not want to waste their time or city staff time, we would instead focus on different programs with the city.
And I, I mean, I don't, and I'll, I don't want to speak for the whole council, it's not a matter of, so if we already know that. Our city, our municipality has built and can permit to that manufactured home code. It's not a matter of this body not supporting, it's a matter of this body. Intending to do their due diligence and reviewing the applications and expectations of. What does eventually go forward, so if this, like, if there's no restriction to. Engaging in those conversations, and we're still looking at over a month before the application portal opens. Several months before it closes and scoring is competitive, I don't. Understand why we would need to rush this if there's not a. And you said technically, no, if there is not a barrier to these conversations, it sounds like these conversations are already happening, which is a good thing. So if there's no barrier to these conversations occurring. I don't understand the need to push for expedition.
So, just so that I understand, because this might be where there's some confusion, or maybe I'm misunderstanding. If we pass this resolution basically saying that this complies with our zoning. And someone wanted to come and put in an application to be a part of that program. Would they still have to come back to this body to get a separate resolution approving their application, or would they be covered under this broad form application?
My understanding, and I can get clarification on this from Crystal, is that they would be covered under this, but. Functionally, actually, there are. In my knowledge, no nonprofits in the city of Binghamton that could proceed with an app, a successful compliant application to HCR. Without purchasing city-owned properties, which would necessarily require this body to then weigh in on the application specifically. I will also state that one of the things that I'm concerned about is that if this particular authorization is not put forward. And an authorization is put forward later that includes additional limitations on the process, that HCR is not going to look favorably upon that, they've already said they. Do not want us putting additional restrictions on top of these, and so frankly, I don't want to spend a bunch of time working with nonprofits damaging my relationship with them. On something that is going to change down the line. I would like an, an authorizing resolution that states that this is allowable, and then addition, specific applications. We can talk about the specifics that make sense with individual nonprofits, as opposed to creating a broad-based set of regulations, and not every nonprofit is. Equally. Ressourced, capable of meeting. A very, very high standard that I know this body is going to want to see, especially from more established nonprofits. It really creates, in my opinion, an uneven playing field if we. Set the limitations very high, and then there's not as many people that can actually meet those requirements as we put forward.
I think I'm still unclear on the actual need for an authorizing resolution at this stage. So you've identified that it's not a technical barrier when it comes to having conversations with nonprofits. We know this grant program exists and was introduced, we know the timeline. We know uh, what the benchmarks for scoring are, it's, it's all laid out, so I don't think it's an, it's an intention from this body to change those. Criteria, it's. For me, it's the, I don't see. In the program guidelines, this step as. Something that has to be approved by this body separately from our approval of applications.
It really is a communications and marketing tool that we can then use to go out to the nonprofits and say, this is something that we're eligible for, similar to how we did with Block by Block. We didn't need to have an authorizing resolution, but we had all of the terms and conditions from the state laid out, we could say. Hey, come to us if you meet these terms and conditions, you can consider an application under Block by Block, this really just allows us to say. This body has affirmatively shown that they're interested in proceeding with this program, um, and. I have a lot of competing priorities, I have a lot of projects that I'm working on, and I, I really like to have very solid footing. I know that this body can take a long time to make decisions, I fully respect that, but I, I'm not going to spend. A ton, a ton of time on this until I know that there's buy-in and that something is, is actually real. Um, because that's just time I'm taking away from other projects that are in more advanced stages. And I, I only have so many hours in the day, and I, I want to make sure that I'm using them judiciously.
There's, you've said there's no barrier, though, like you can have those conversations. And you are having those conversations, and the outreach is already being conducted, like a communications and marketing tool, you have the direct. Relationships already that exist, like I, I don't.
Is there anything in what is being proposed that is not accurate, true, or supported by this body?
The program guidelines don't require municipal support for authorization, they require it in support specifically for the applications, and we don't have the applications in front of us.
But as we confirmed with HCR, they are comfortable with a broad-based authorization to allow us to. Demonstrate that we have this commitment in place.
But you've already confirmed that we know we have this commitment in place, or that we can at least permit to the manufactured home code, which is the actual required authorization.
But I don't have this body's written authorization, approval, and support to actually proceed with this program.
You don't need it to actually proceed with this program, you just said you need it for marketing purposes.
Right, from a perspective of how I would like to spend my time over the next several months, I would like to have formal firm authorization before I. Spend a lot of time on this.
And I would like to have the applications before I approve.
And that is a hundred percent your ability to have that opinion, and I would be interested to hear if anybody else has differing opinions. I assume that they don't, but.
Well, seeing that this was marked for expedition and that you guys are at a standstill there, I will ask if there is a motion to expedite.
I would say if is there a way we could get those before we vote on it, if possible?
Get what specifically?
The applications.
No. I mean, if you choose not to advance this at all, then yes, we could have this conversation when a nonprofit decides to put an application forward. But I I'm not going to have anything for you by Wednesday.
Can you just restate that right? Because what I don't want to have happen is I understand your 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 statement about wanting to make sure that this body is in support so that that could help to guide you in terms of how you spend your time and making sure that you're not going to devote a lot of time into this project for there to be some breakdown later on. I guess my specific question related to this process is that if we are not moving forward with this, does that mean that you will not spend your time doing this work to advance this project?
I'm happy to send out the information to nonprofits and they can proactively reach out if they're interested in doing that, but.
And there currently is no barrier to doing that.
There's no barrier for a nonprofit to call me or email me at any time and talk about any project. How substantive those conversations are really depends on whether I have funding in hand, whether it's an application, whether there's an authorizing resolution. There's been things that have come down here that have ultimately failed on the floor or otherwise not been considered. Again, completely a decision that you guys are allowed to make, but I'm being cautious about how I spend my time until something is affirmatively voted on.
So, oh, go ahead. You go.
Well, I mean, which I guess there would be an issue for whomever you report to, but the the program requires, so it's not, there's not an opposite. I love the expansion of the cross mod pilot. Love it. Love that it cuts the development time and how, I mean, we need that. It's not a matter of the a lack of interest from this body and seeing a cross mod project move forward. It's that this authorization is not required by the program guidelines prior to submission for applications, but ultimately we will be, we expect to be reviewing. We understand that site control is a component of this that is required. We understand that we will be reviewing requests for for site control and for for transfers, but the or sales, but the I mean, the I, the idea that and again, which wouldn't be for me to address, but but that you wouldn't move forward with a viable grant opportunity. When you've identified that there's not a an authorization requirement and currently is no barrier to outreach is confusing to me.
I'm happy to send this out to nonprofits and see who replies, and they can come back in as individual applications if that is the preference of this body.
So is it here from council that I I echo the sentiment. This seems like a wonderful proposal. I thank you. Full support of exploring this. I think that is definitely something that would be good for our city and our residents, right? And so like, and and I'm sure that I don't want to speak for anyone else, but they're also in agreement, like we've been talking about this and like I really appreciate the hard work that has been put into bringing opportunities like this to council and identifying these opportunities, but I just, I I don't want to see like there be a breakdown here because I do feel like this needs to move forward, right? And so.
Honestly, I think it just sounds like we have a difference of approach on how we want to do this, how I would prefer to do this from my professional experience and how I would like to move forward with my workload. Tito may feel differently, and he's not here to represent himself, so I will not speak for him on how he wants to allocate his time on something like this. It is one hundred percent acceptable for this body to not feel comfortable with this particular approach. But I am outlining that this is how I would prefer to approach this situation, given how I work and my professional experience. And again, completely your decision on how you would like to proceed. This is what I have on the floor for you guys to consider. You can chose choose to expedite. You can choose to not expedite. You can choose to not bring this to the floor for a vote. And we can explore this again in a few months if there are additional applications that come in and talk about them at that time. Completely valid approach, just not what I am proposing and not the way that I would prefer to manage this.
Understand.
Considering the constraints of the program on the developer's ability to extract money essentially out of it beyond the six percent fee. And the overall desirability of the project and the fact it would still these projects all still have to conform to city. I mean, we're not changing anything about our zoning regulations or or lot requirements or setbacks or anything like that. It's it's kind of just a ministerial sort of giving it a go ahead. And especially considering the fact that any lot, any lots that would be sold into this will have to be reviewed by us and agreed to by the mayor. It's that, you know, anytime we sell property, I don't, I if if planning and economic development want this particular tool, if they want this particular endorsement from us in their toolkit to pursue this, I'm in favor of saying yes to it at this point.
That is a very succinct and accurate representation of what I was saying, and I appreciate your ability to pull it into a more condensed version.
I'll motion expedite and see if there's a second.
I'll second. Seeing we have a motion and a second for expedition, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call? Now, any discussion on the expedition?
It's not a requirement. We've been informed. It's a marketing communications approach. There is no technical barrier otherwise to the economic development or planning department engaging in these conversations with nonprofits. So I don't see why we're.
It's, it's true. That's true, but I I you know, I I appreciate the ask and, you know, maybe our endorsement at this early stage is enough to you know, potentially push over, you know, pushing nonprofit into pursuing this, looking at this a little bit more.
Do you think Councilwoman Rathmill, do you have any other concerns with this other than it's not necessary? So if we're voting to move forward, are there any other concerns that you believe that this I should take into consideration with the vote to support this project?
In addition to it not being necessary, the what I don't want to do, and I think broad scope is the language that was used. I don't want in any capacity to move forward proposals or the opportunity for proposals that would be considered under broad strokes, the I mean, the the need for housing exists. We all know that. We all recognize that that the cross mod pilot project has potential locally. We are already aware that our municipality can affirm the the permitting for this type of housing. But but any kind of support in broad strokes.
I mean, I I see it. What's wrong with broad stroke support when you know that the specific applications, any transfer of real estate is going to have to come back? I I get.
Would be concerned if moving forward with this would somehow limit our ability to make decisions later on or remove us from the process somehow. And based off of what council member Kavanaugh mentioned, we're circling back to review applications. We're a part of this process alone each step. Am I, is that accurate?
Yeah, they couldn't even transfer the vacant properties without our saying without them coming in and giving us a proposal. So if this was vote on this today and then we would have no more say, that would be a totally different discussion in my head.
And it's a very good point, Councilwoman Murray, and I want to state very clearly that this is not an intention at all to circumvent this council. We one hundred percent believe and every piece of information that I have to date shows that this will require the transfer of city owned properties to these nonprofits for this to be successful, and those will come back in front of the body. So I I definitely do not want this to be read as any effort to circumvent this body. There will be other opportunities for review during this process.
And is a marketing and communications approach that is unnecessary for the conversation to be engaged in locally otherwise?
But very helpful from my professional perspective.
Well, I'll call the discussion there. We've had a motion and a second on expedition. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill? No. Councilmember Mataveski is absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
I don't think I'm going to be ready to vote on this on Wednesday. I think we've got a lot on that agenda already. And I'm not saying I'm we said no to the expedition, but it's not a a lack of support or showing of support. So I just need more time. Sorry.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
I am in support of it. I just don't, I I'm not really educated on it that much, so I don't really want to vote no. And then I I mean, I don't want to vote no, and then we lose it and like we lose the interest and this could be housing for someone. No. Um, but um, I'm I'm not that educated on it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no, because I'm not that educated on it at this moment.
Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
And give us three, three. Does not pass.
All right, we're moving on. Juliette, I assume you're filling in for Steve. Our next presenter is Dr. Juliette Burling, and this is R L twenty five dash one sixty one. And this is in the planning committee, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmill.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is R L twenty five, one sixty one, an ordinance to amend twenty twenty two home A R P budget.
Hi, good evening. We were given an extra two thousand eight hundred eighty two dollars from HUD for home A R P this summer. They had gone through their accounting and found they had extra money. So one of the requests is to modify the budget to accept that addition. And then we had developed a plan. The home A R P plan that created a budget splitting the one point nine million dollars into a number of different categories. HUD has asked that it be simplified. They prefer one project. They prefer construction, but they asked that we simplify our budget. So that's the other part of what we're asking is to roll just all of that into a category that can be used for any of the above. Well, not really. Is to be rolled into a category for, we're not going to use it for administrative support. Everything else will just be put into another's category that can be used for tenant based rental assistance for construction for services. And that's.
That's the emergency disaster work program program budget line?
Yeah, I'll go into that.
Typically, that so that budget line was new to me. What is typically covered or what activities are typically?
To be honest, I'm not sure how that title for that budget was developed, but this was related to the emergency funds from COVID. So that's probably how they came up with it. That's just an internal title for a budget line. Yeah. So would all just be made and put into that line? The expenditures would, we're going to talk about next.
So can you, and you started here and I didn't quite catch. So HUD identified additional home A R P funding, and that was when?
This summer.
Okay.
I believe it was July or August. Two thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars.
Two thousand eight hundred. Oh, wow. How generous of them. Okay. Couple of, I guess, clarifying questions. Home A R P expenditure deadline is January thirtieth, twenty thirty.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Expenditure deadline for home A R P projects is January thirtieth, twenty thirty.
Yep.
Correct. Relative to the home A R P allocation plan that was drafted in correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be that that was drafted in twenty twenty one when the funds were originally released, but not submitted until twenty twenty three.
No, the funds weren't available. No, it was drafted in twenty twenty one. The plan was completed in twenty twenty two. It was approved and the funds were released October twenty twenty three.
And then the plan was amended in twenty twenty three, which is what is attached in the materials. The so a couple of questions on the plan, and I know we have a separate R L for the proposals, but before we get to that, since the plan was attached. So the twenty twenty one plan included the goal of creating ten units of non congregate shelter. Is that, is that still a goal? What?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's still a goal and it's still.
That's like the minimum goal. So the proposals we've actually received develop the proposals that we've received would be developing a lot more than that. Only one of them did not involve uh, construction or renovation. The other two did.
Right. I didn't see non congregate shelter in there, though.
Okay. What do you mean?
The, well, so we didn't actually get the proposals attached in the materials, but Councilmember Kavanaugh shared that.
Yeah, I apologize. That was an oversight.
So I haven't, I haven't had a chance to fully review the proposal, so so I may have missed it, but I mean, non congregate shelter is a very specific project type, and I didn't see within the three proposals that were submitted that non congregate shelter was being pursued. Does that remain a goal within the allocation plan?
The way we wrote the R F P to simplify, HUD wanted us to simplify it. We said construct housing, renovate or new construction for low moderate income, eighty percent under, and we were targeting the percentage that would be for deeply affordable.
Should be the thirty percent, sure.
Right. So that's the way we addressed it. A lot of the questions that we received are regarding the how the funds could be spent, the qualifying populations, could we clarify that? There was a lot of confusion.
Yeah, the the, which again, we're not on this R L yet, and I do have some questions related to that, but even just in preliminarily reviewing the proposals that were submitted, I can see the confusion when it comes to qualifying populations, and I have some concern about what wasn't identified as target populations in those projects. I think the concern that I would want to represent regarding the allocation plan and the time that has occurred since it was submitted. So that twenty twenty one plan identifies zero unsheltered individuals in the city. The point in time count that was used to represent zero did not note that the C O C opted not to conduct an unsheltered point in time count during that year, which so the number is zero, not because it's accurate, but because the C O C skipped the count that year.
Right.
Meanwhile, we had sixty seven unsheltered individuals identified in twenty twenty two. We're up to ninety one now this year. So I think I would also say that I have concerns regarding how accurate the plan is to current and existing present need. So I think, I would also say that I have concerns regarding how accurate the plan is to current and existing present need. Uh, reflective of the proposals, which again, I'll admit I haven't quite had a chance to fully review.
Did you see the RF, the request for proposals that was on the city website?
Uh, I believe Councilmember Kavanaugh shared that with me several weeks ago as well.
Right. So we made it as, um, easy as possible for people to apply for funding to build housing for low-income people, people in need. Um, and you know, the document was developed in part with CDAC, with public comment, with public meetings, um.
I appreciate that, but the data is inaccurate. The, so just to clarify, so the goal of creating 10 units of non-congregate shelter, no longer part of the, I think I'm still a little stuck on that. So the RFP that was issued, intention to create, and of course, the solution is afford deeply affordable housing. The low mod, not thrilled about. Uh, the target should be deeply, but just to clarify, is there, is there still a goal of supporting non-congregate shelter?
I mean, I think you're conflating a number of goals that were laid out in the plan with requiring the applications to meet every one of those goals.
I'm not conflating, I'm not saying that it should be required. I'm inquiring whether it's still identified as a priority and if there will be funds remaining to pursue other priorities outside of the proposals that were introduced.
So that would, so the RFP went out with all of those, referencing the plan and with all of those goals intact. And the plant, the projects that came in, none of them involved a non-congregate shelter. I suppose we could fund what came in or what we choose to fund, which is the next RL.
Right.
At a level that leaves money for another RFP to go out. That would be an option, but I, I, I don't, this is the second RFP. Um, so I don't know that one would, I mean, we can try again with, with, with leave some money left and see what happens, but this is what rolled in, I guess, would be my comment.
Yeah, I hear you and I appreciate that. I want to make sure that, I mean, this is the planning department and I want to make sure that we are being strategic and data-driven in supporting proposals that actually meet priority needs. Not that in general affordable housing wouldn't lend toward that, but if we're not ensuring that.
Came in, did, and did show how they were going, they were meeting priority needs.
I mean, so, and again, I haven't read through all of the proposals because we didn't get them until this afternoon. But the, I mean, the low to moderate, 80 to 120% like target as opposed to the 30%.
80%. Every proposal that came in is 80% under. First Word Action Council is targeting 30 to 60%.
Metros has low to moderate, and that's again, like.
But in their proposal, it says 80% and under.
Right, I mean, 80, which is, which is not 30.
We had our, um, the criteria for evaluation gave extra points for projects that met. Let me see if, hopefully I brought it with me. But we're, we're not, we haven't gotten to that part yet.
Right, and we're not, yeah, we're not on 162, so we don't have to get to proposals. Yeah, I think I.
So in terms of this RL right here, we're asking, we have to modify the budget to add the additional money in. And we're asking for the permission to roll it onto one line.
The budget pieces in terms of what is required so that we can allow for incorporating the new amount and rolling it into one line makes sense. I think it's 162 in the proposals that were identified. But I mean, the plan was attached to both RLs and I have significant concerns regarding the plan. It's difficult to deliver.
It was already approved.
You know, but it's, I mean, at this point, it's extremely outdated.
Yep, but it is the one that we have, and really, we could have just included the budget as it was split out in the plan. But we included the entire plan. Um.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to this discussion? Hearing none, I do see that there is a requirement to expedite. Can I entertain a motion for expedition?
It says, check is no. It's highlighted, but it's.
Oh.
It was originally submitted without expedition request, and upon request, the clerk's office modified it to reflect the expedition request.
Thank you.
Yeah, the asterisk on the work session agenda is what gave it away for me, and Councilmember Hotchkiss. Okay. Hearing no motion to expedite, we'll move on. The next is RL 25-162. Dr. Juliette Burling is our presenter. It is in the Planning Committee, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is RL 25-162, a resolution to authorize agreements with agencies for home ARP funding.
Yep, and I, I can give you a brief overview of what each agency was looking for, if that would help. They weren't, you know, terribly long. Um, we had developed an application so that we could have line-by-line comparisons to make sure that each application gave us similar amounts of information. Metro Interfaith has, um, taken possession of 109 Oak Street, which is the red and white building across from the high school. It's really in need of help. It is structurally sound. Um, we've had a couple of engineering, they've had engineering analyses, people going through to make sure that it was a good, um, acquisition on their part. And they're proposing to, uh, produce hold on, I'm blinking. I think eight units. There's four floors, two on each floor. Is that right, Rob, Robert? And four bedrooms in each unit and two bathrooms. So it's gonna produce a, a large amount of funding or a large amount of, um, housing. Oh, sorry. Yeah, 16 units and 24 bedrooms. Trying to remember.
Had a couple different proposed layouts, actually, from what I, and I can't remember what, if they landed on one, but it's, it was, it might have, it was I think between 24 and 36, actually, depending on the layout.
That sounds right. Okay. So a lot of housing, and each unit is going to be, will be ADA compliant. They're adding an elevator in the back. Um, two bathrooms will, one will be completely ADA, um, accessible. And this is, will be one of the very few developments that is fully ADA compliant. We are going, they are going through, um, SHPO because it is a, you know, in a historic district. We, in the past, we had, we were working with the previous owner. Permission verbally to remove the porches and use the, um, I guess, the decorative features of it to create a new front porch. Those are the bits that are collapsing. Um, Metro wants to stabilize them and expand that into additional living area per unit. The, um, emergencies, I guess, stairway in the back, I would even call it, that is going to be removed and pulled, um, and replaced with an interior one along with the elevator. It's collapsing. I think it's a good five feet off the ground right now. Um, they have stabilized it and closed off all access to it, which we had a big issue where the city did. Um, so they already invested a lot of time and money into it. So they have asked for, um, funding to complete that project, and they are also applying for additional funding for, um, sub-tenant-based, the T-BRA, um, separate from this, because they really want the money to go into the construction renovation and meeting the historic requirements of, you know.
Are they applying for T-BRA under home ARP?
Uh, no, not under this. They are applying for it through the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a total cost of how much, what they're estimating that project to be?
Uh, 3,150.
No, it was more than that. It was, it was, yeah.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's at or over the higher end of the estimate.
It says 3 million to 5 million. I'm just reading the article.
So, and then.
There's an article?
Yeah, that's, I was gonna ask about that too, because like, I, there's always a disconnect that like, there's articles out before we even like get to.
I didn't know there was an article.
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading it now, but, um, I, I know this is, that's not your fault. But there's like kind of a disconnect, because like we should be before an article is put out there, like we should know.
Yeah, have in the conversation.
Article.
It's on WNBF. I don't know who put it in, Metro Interfaith, City. I'm not sure who put it out, but.
I don't believe the city did.
So they're requesting 900,000 in home ARP for a project they anticipate will cost between 3 and 5 million. Do we have an idea of their other financing mechanisms?
They have, um, on the, on the very back of their proposal, it's the additional funding is historic tax credit, um, 1.9 million. The, um, New York State Home Community Renewal, they're asking, um, 1.2 and 50,000, um, Metro. And they were initially requesting 1.9 from this grant, but.
And it says that the grant could be submitted to the state next spring, so they're doing that, not right now, though, right? Or is that what they're doing with the, with the?
So they've not secured the other financing?
No, not involved.
Would be required to move the product. Do we have? I mean, I was surprised, to be honest, to see Metro Interfaith's, I didn't see the proposal, but to see that they were included in this conversation, uh, simply because I think it's been a couple of decades since they've done a rehab project. So do we have, do we have any concerns in terms of the them not yet securing the bulk of what would be required for the project?
Uh, I don't, they, I know they've, um, they have gotten loans, guaranteed loans to, uh, start the work. They've already invested a lot of their own money into the project. To me, that's skin in the game. They have a lot. The, what they're requesting is all going towards construction, um, from this grant. And then the additional funds, they're making application. They've already, the historic tax credits, they're identifying with an architect what they can apply for. So that's already well underway. They've already paid the architect a large amount of money to do that. So they're, they're well on the way to getting the rest of the funding and they're, they are committed to this, yeah. And they brought the project to us.
They bought the building too, right? They, there was a capital outlay to actually get the building, right? They bought the building. There was a capital outlay to buy the building. Part, part of, and I, we all need time to read through them all, but, uh, part of, um, I had the same concerns about their, you know, they are, they did build projects in the past and stuff, and muscle, muscle they have not exercised in a while. That was concerning to me, but they do seem to have, uh, they chunked out nicely the components of the project, um, that this round of funding, if you want to think of it like that, would, 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 uh, fund, which is a lot of that initial, uh, kind of showing up the building, getting those porches back in, in, uh, you know, kind of acceptable, um, structural and, and visual, uh, integrity, uh, securing the building, uh, getting that, the building envelope closed up with, uh, with new windows. Um, and then addressing those access requirements of the ADA's, there was some, some nice chunks when you look through this that, that this money will go forward and be, you know, getting all those important initial steps done with the building, I think.
That's in the, that's in the proposal.
That's in the proposal.
And I appreciate, yeah, no, I appreciate anytime an agency is gonna be very specific. I think to the, it, it doesn't feel reasonable to, to expedite this, having not actually had the chance to fully review the proposals.
I agree.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a matter of not necessarily supporting. Uh, it's just that not having them included in the original materials and only just getting them this afternoon.
I, I agree. I think it's a good idea, though, that they, they do want to do this project. I do know that Binghamton High School, a lot of kids before this is boarded up, they would cut class and go inside of those buildings. So that, I know that has been a problem in the past at the high school and do whatever, you know, they would do whatever inside those buildings, but.
Yeah, that's, that's dangerous.
Yeah, very dangerous, you know, so, yeah.
Dr. Burling, would you be willing, so if we were able to schedule a Planning Committee meeting to bring in the applicants to ask questions specifically about proposals? And then have you there to represent, obviously, would, is that something that we could shoot for?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I mean, you know, depending on their schedules too, you know, but yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you, though, that Metro is already asking about the, um, the move in New York. They, they've identified some properties and they're like, oh, they want to get back into development.
Did they bring new people on or change their board or something, or that they're going this direction or just?
They decided they want to get back into development, get some more housing online, so.
I think that's, I mean, part of you know, most of these nonprofit organizations are receiving the announcements already from the state about opportunities that are identified. But glad to hear that they're jumping back in.
Oh, yeah.
So is any further discussion on RL 25-162?
That's gonna go to committee, right?
I mean, I want to know what's going on with First Word Action Council. There's the allocation for 800,000?
Yeah, they, uh, had a shortfall in funding from a change in the LMI tax credits. Apparently it dropped by 10 cents per. So that's what they're asking for funding to offset that kind of gap. So that they could continue where they're on their existing project, and they're the ones that have their, I mean, the project is so far advanced. You know? So this would keep it online.
Right.
And we reduced the amount that they requested. We, we had identified everybody to, um, let us know what the minimum amount they could accept and still be operable with. We tried to meet that. All three of the proposals had such good merit that it was a really difficult decision. To origin just one, so we're, we split it up.
So is, for First Word Action Council, is the 800,000 the final amount that they need? Because I think sometime last year, there was, we allocated funding. I don't know.
Maybe they'll ask for more money again later.
Right, is this gonna, it's gonna get us over the finish line.
There, that, I, that's the, I think that's, I think that's the, the goal, and I think it's a reasonable goal. I mean, they're, they're beyond shovel-ready. They're trying to get going this, like, this month
Yeah.
on, on starting projects. Um, they, um,
They have, yeah.
They're at the point where it's, it's, uh, this is not all they asked for and it's not all they need, so they're either gonna have to find another, uh, you know, a, a bridge loan of some sort or cut in, ultimately cut in their developer fee, I think is what's gonna happen. So.
I mean, an 800 grand is not.
They were looking for, right, they were looking for 900,000. They said their minimum that they would be able to accept to keep the project moving forward was 650,000. So this is kind of in between, so. And that, that's a tremendous number of units being brought online.
Do we expect, so not necessarily related, but do we expect an additional requests related to the Lytec reduction?
This is the only one we've gotten.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. And then Vroom County Urban League was, um, requesting additional funds to, um, expand their program, add more staff and, um, use the money to hopefully help additional families, additional individuals. Um, we reduced that amount, um, of their request. We reduced that amount of the request.
Did they get help? Did you help them? Because I know, I know that they were, I know that they were doing, I'll talk to you about it later, another time.
We just didn't want to pay for already existing overhead, which was when we read through the proposal. It kind of leaned towards that, so we wanted to just, you know, have the money available to put into the community. Not necessarily, you know, subsidized, I guess. I don't know how else to put it, but, but it's such an awesome program.
I, I mean, and I'm, I'm happy to take a swift look at my calendar to see what's available soon to have that conversation with these three.
Like two or three times or dates and I can send it out to them.
Okay.
See, I can do a doodle poll.
Okay.
There's probably something more current, but that's what I call. Okay.
We're going to move on to R L twenty-five dash one sixty-three. Which, go ahead, Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you. This is R L twenty-five one sixty-three, a resolution to authorize agreements with agencies for C D B G and E S G funding.
Oh, I'm sorry. So this would just give us, authorize the mayor to go into the individual contracts with these service agencies. And this is the one that I really hope we can expedite.
This was the only clarification, because I didn't have a chance to compare the budget, to compare what was included to the budget that we approved previously for, it's this, yeah. Okay. Which, I mean, this pretty standard annually where we approve the recommendations and then we have to approve the final amount adjusted based on HUD conversations.
Yep, this, this is it.
This is mostly actually just to authorize the agreements to actually issue out the funding versus there's typically not a ton of adjustment in terms of the amounts.
Thank you.
I'll motion expedite.
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second to expedite, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Madavetsky is absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you, that is six zero.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Berlin.
You're welcome. I'll make my calendar open totally, so whatever you can work in, let me know. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So we're moving on to R L twenty-five dash one fifty-six. The presenter is Councilmember Kavanaugh. It is in the Rules and Procedures and Special Studies Committee, and the only other committee member here is Councilmember Murray.
So this is a resolution to. Oh, you want me to read it for you? Council President Dundon.
Oh. I'll read it.
So this is R L, no, no. It's R L twenty-five one fifty-six, which is an ordinance to amend the Charter, Chapter one twenty-four, to include reporting requirements for salary increase.
This is just a small change. There's a, there's a calculated salary pool every year that the mayor can apply to management, management positions essentially. And it's just not a good mechanism to see when those happen and appear and have them recorded, or have them noted by us and so we can see them in the budget. So I'm just trying to tweak that. It's, it's a minor annoyance in doing budget work, so that's all, and we can discuss it in the Rules Committee. So that's all. So I'm not expedited and we'll probably have it in committee. Just wanted to bring it up.
I appreciate you bringing it forward, because I think it's kind of been a little, little piece of transparency that I think we would all appreciate.
Thank you, Robert.
If nobody has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.